I'd like to call to order the City of St. Charles City Council meeting for Tuesday, September 2nd of 2025. Roll call, please.
Petrella?
Here.
Werble?
Here.
Besner?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Sokitis?
Here.
Bulk?
Here.
Longgard?
Here.
Munn? Gemm?
Here.
Spellman?
Here.
Okay, I would now like to ask Alderman Gemm to give tonight some vacation.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening. Good and gracious Lord, we give you thanks for the changing of the seasons and for a successful start to a new school year. Please grant safety for all of our students, educators, and administrators as the year goes forward. Grant us wisdom and guidance during this evening's meeting as issues are discussed and decisions are made. Help us to be respectful during discussions and thoughtful of our decisions while keeping the best interests of the City of St. Charles as a priority. Keep safe and protect our police, fire, EMTs, and all first responders as they go about keeping our residents and visitors safe during these challenging times. Bless and guide our mayor, elected and appointed officials, city staff, and all city employees as they go about their roles and responsibilities to make St. Charles a welcoming and vibrant community for all. Amen.
Now, I ask Alderman Sokitis to read his proclamation.
Good, um, please, excuse me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of a religious stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming tonight. We have a couple of proclamations that I want to start with. But before we do that, I wanted to share, after each meeting, there's conversations that happen, and after the last meeting, somebody said, who are the people that sit in the back left corner? And so I thought that today I just wanted to introduce, uh, I'm not going to ask them to stand up and introduce themselves by name, but so that everybody is aware, those is, that is our city administrator and all the city directors. So that covers police and fire, public works, finance, uh, the whole group. So I just, they do a fantastic job, and if we can just give them a round of applause. We're here, we know why they're here, but somebody said, who are they? And so now we know. Um, so there's a couple of proclamations that we want to start with tonight, and the first one is a proclamation, uh, for Suicide Prevention Month, which is this month, September of 2025. And I'm gonna read the proclamation, then I'm gonna ask, uh, if you want to come on up. Um, so the, the prevention, uh, reads as follows. Whereas suicide is a national and statewide public health crisis that causes immense pain for individuals, families, and communities. And whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, suicide is one of the leading causes of death in the United States, with someone dying by suicide approximately every 11 minutes. And whereas mental health challenges, including depression and substance use disorders, are significant risk factors for suicide, and reducing the stigma around seeking help is critical to prevention efforts. And whereas the City of St. Charles is committed to supporting the emotional well-being of its residents and promoting accessible mental health services for all by distributing funds through its Mental Health Board to organizations that provide programming and services addressing mental health issues. And whereas education, awareness, and open dialogue can help save lives, and every individual, organization, or community has a role to play in preventing suicide and supporting those in crisis. And whereas national and local mental health organizations, crisis lines, and healthcare professionals are working tirelessly to provide care, support, and hope to individuals in need, particularly King County's Health Department and the 980 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, which provides 24/7 support via call, text, or chat to people experiencing mental health, substance abuse, or suicidal crises. And whereas during Suicide Prevention Month, we remember those lost to suicide, offer support to survivors and loved ones, and recommit ourselves to committing a culture, creating a culture where everyone feels safe, seen, and supported. Now therefore, it be resolved that I, Clint Hall, Mayor of St. Charles, proclaim September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Month in the City of St. Charles. I encourage all residents, organizations, schools, and businesses to increase awareness, foster understanding, and to connect individuals with resources to prevent suicide. Before I introduce our next speaker, I just want to say a couple things. Um, one is, St. Charles, like every other community, has been hit hard by this. And so, uh, tonight, to be able to, to make this, and, uh, proclamation is really, really important to who we are as a community. Um, there's been a couple of, uh, individuals, uh, families who have suffered losses and have turned those into opportunities to make sure that we as a community prevent it or try to prevent it from ever happening again. And one, uh, is here with us, but before I introduce her, another is Kendall's Kindness. And that's, uh, Kim and Jim Mafia, uh, were the ones who started their organization in 2021, uh, have a beautiful mural in St. Charles, and one of their, uh, sayings is, be kind, pass it on. Uh, that, to my right, is a good friend of mine, Ruthie Lehman, um, from Caleb's Hope, uh, who's, it's okay to not be okay. It's something that I think about when I go by this beautiful mural that just went up. So I want to turn, uh, the microphone over to her, but I do want to say, on behalf of the City of St. Charles, thank you for that beautiful mural, and thank you for everything you're doing.
Sorry, Glenn, I'm a little taller. Um... I didn't mean that, ma'am. I didn't mean that, ma'am.
Ouch.
Uh, you know, the goal of a proclamation for National Suicide Prevention Month is the first action step from municipality to take, to start the conversation about proactive suicide prevention and mental health awareness in the community. The proclamation states three things. Acknowledge suicide as an, as an issue, raise the visibility of available suicide prevention services, and encourage others to be available to those around them by learning how to discuss suicide without increasing the risk or harm. Hi, my name is Ruthie Lehman. My husband, Ha, my daughter Hannah, and I started the Caleb Hope Foundation in 2018 after our daughter, Caleb Brook Lehman, committed suicide just two days after her 15th birthday. When we started the foundation, I met with a friend of mine, and we talked about what kind of logo we wanted to have. And we came up with, it's okay A Y to not be okay A Y. It wasn't months after we decided that, that my friend texted me and said, oh my gosh, Ruthie, I'm downtown, I'm running in the streets, and someone came behind me and has a shirt on that says, it's okay not to be okay, came by. I ran after them, and on the front of the shirt was Hope for the Day. Hope for the Day is an organization outside of Chicago that is about free education and suicide, uh, suicide prevention. They also run a great little coffee shop called Sips of Hope that we went to visit. This has come full circle after seven years. So when Jane Munn asked me to talk about Caleb Hope today, it was a no-brainer. For those who do not know Caleb Hope Foundation, our reason is my daughter, Caleb Brook Lehman. Our goal is to help others speak up as conversation is the first step toward proactive suicide prevention. Caleb Hope supports many organizations in our community, both financially and physically. But most importantly, Caleb Hope stands beside those that struggle with mental illness. We want them to know that we are here, that we hear them, and we can lead them to resources that would help them deal and ideally heal. Caleb Brook Lehman struggled alone. She did not like to be sick, and she did not want to talk about it. The darkness that she went through, I can never understand, but it makes me very sad and heartbroken for her. I don't want anyone else, whether it's a child or an adult, to go through this alone. I want it to keep talking, and I want it to keep talking, and I'm hoping that others will as well. It doesn't just take a city to proclaim this. It takes each individual in that city to be there for other people and make them feel worthy of your presence. Talking can cancel a mental health crisis. Mental health education before crisis mode is crucial. So let's keep talking. Thank you.
I'm gonna move this microphone down now. The next proclamation is National Adult Education and Family Literacy Weeks. I'm gonna ask if the three of you can come up, the four can come up, and finally read it. So this is National Adult Education and Family Literacy Week from September 14th to September 20th, whereas more than 43 million Americans can't read or write at the most basic level, and 62.7 million lack, lack basic math skills, as well as the credentials and skills necessary to succeed in post-secondary education. And whereas every year, one in three young adults drops out of high school. And whereas the American Action Forum estimates that America is short an estimated 7.5 million private sector workers across all skill levels. And whereas adult education programs contribute to solving these challenges by helping Americans move along in the continuum in their educational journey to achieve basic skills and get prepared for career in college. And whereas adult education programs in high schools and adult schools, community colleges, community centers, and community-based nonprofit organizations offer low-cost, high-value programs that upgrade, upgrade the skill set of our citizens. And whereas St. Charles, Illinois celebrates Adult Education and Family Literacy Week as a proud participant in the National Educate and Elevate Campaign, which helps our citizens learn all about their adult educational options to attain their professional and personal goals. Now therefore, I, Clint Hall, the Mayor of St. Charles, do hereby proclaim September 14th through the 20th, 2025, as Adult Literacy Week in the City of St. Charles. And I encourage all citizens to join in the efforts to increase literacy and support families of our community with action and advocacy. So thank you for being here today. Now I'm gonna turn it over to you, and I'd love it if you'd say a few words. Thank you.
Good evening. We're literacy volunteers at Fox Valley, a nonprofit based here in St. Charles. We serve Central King County. We work with trained volunteers in the community to provide free literacy services for adults living locally. We work to increase their literacy skills, their life skills, and the work skills that help them enter employment or move up within the employment that they currently have. We appreciate your support. Thank you.
All right, next up on our agenda then today is, I'm gonna turn it over to Alderman Gemm and Alderman Spellman, who will now present the Spirit of St. Charles Awards. I'll turn it over to you.
For anyone who's not aware, the Spirit of St. Charles Awards are a new award that Mayor Hall instituted when he became mayor, where we recognize one business or volunteer or student a month by award that is contributing to a great spirit in St. Charles. So I have the honor of recognizing Big Hearts of Fox Valley, if you guys would like to come on up, Jennifer and Minor Mobley, founders. Big Hearts of Fox Valley is a nonprofit supporting District 303 children and families facing financial hardship. In their own way, here's how it started. When we opened Excel Outover here in 2014, we knew we wanted to find a way to give back to our community. As we looked under our Christmas tree to see all the presents our children would be getting, we thought about all the little ones that wouldn't be opening presents on Christmas morning. We decided to reach out to our children's elementary school social worker to see if there were families that may need some assistance providing Christmas gifts to their kids. We, like many others, didn't realize there was a large number of families in need within our very own community. That's how it all started, with purchasing gifts for children in need in our very own school. Big Hearts strives to create a compassionate environment that empowers youth and strengthens their foundation for a brighter, more hopeful future. They work directly with District 303 social workers to ensure they are delivering meaningful support to the children who need it most when they need it the most. And by alleviating stress within their, within the families, they're directly supporting the health, education, and future of children in our community. As one recipient of their service was said, "When I picked up the gifts, I actually cried as I was driving off, as my faith in humanity was restored." With how selfless all the volunteers are, and all those who brought gifts for all these children, I saw the line of cows receiving gifts, and tears of joy just rolled down my face, that we as a community can come together for one another. So congratulations, Big Hearts of Fox Valley, Jennifer and Minor Mobley, for your service to the community.
All right, good evening, everyone. I get the pleasure of introducing our next Spirit of St. Charles Award, James Reiner. If you could come up, James. It's an honor for Vicki and myself to recognize James for the Spirit of St. Charles Award for his vision, leadership, and community involvement and volunteer service. James is currently a junior at St. Charles North High School. In December of 2023, James and his friend Calvin Reed became co-founders of the St. Charles Urban Design Advocates Nonprofit Organization. This organization, in a very short time, has been active in many projects regarding the bike and pedestrian safety within St. Charles. The mission of STC Urban Design Advocates is to educate the importance, campaign for, create and assist projects that, raise funds, support it, and to host, participate, or sponsor events for eco-friendly and human-centered design principles of what's called new urbanism and the freedom of choice to be able to safely bike, walk, or use public transit as opposed to driving. James and Calvin are active participants in many aspects of our community. They can be seen right here at city council meetings, distributing bicycle safety kits, or developing the Fox Valley Transportation Survey that they did in cooperation with the city staff in an effort to understand the possibilities for public transportation options within our area. James is an example of one of our young leaders stepping up and taking action to address issues and create opportunities for community engagement and volunteering to make St. Charles a vibrant community. Look for James to be a future leader either here in St. Charles or wherever the future takes him. So James, we want to congratulate you and recognize you for your entrepreneurial spirit, community engagement, and volunteerism to make St. Charles a great community. So thank you very much for that. Congratulations, James. Thank you.
James, we, we need you to stay in St. Charles.
And our final Spirit of St. Charles Award tonight goes to a great couple. That would be Cheryl and Doug Dench, if you'd be willing to come forward. Vicki and I, as older person for the third ward, recognize Cheryl and Doug for their longtime dedication to making the St. Charles community a great one. They are lifelong residents of St. Charles and graduates of St. Charles High School. They are a couple that give back in so many ways to the city and other organizations while raising two outstanding children, Molly and Josh. Jennifer and Vicki was kind enough to provide a few remarks to describe both Cheryl and Doug. Doug and Cheryl embody what it means to be civic-minded leaders. Cheryl's dedication to mental health, education, and nonprofit service complements Doug's passion for the arts, marketing, and citywide promotion. Through their time, talent, and leadership, they have and will continue to make a lasting difference in the vibrance and well-being of the City of St. Charles. Now to kind of brag on these two just a little bit. Professional role that Cheryl currently holds or has held is she is the president in order of Riverview Consulting Services, a multi-location consulting practice supporting children, teens, and families. Counseling, thank you. Also, community service, Cheryl was awarded with the 2024 Distinctive Alumni Class by the St. Charles District 303 for her significant impact in mental health advocacy and also community service. She has served on the St. Charles Youth Commission and currently serves on the St. Charles 708 Mental Health Board. She's contributed to the St. Charles School District through the Citizen Advisory Committee. She's a member, board member of the Day One PAC, supporting children, families with children with developmental challenges. She is the founder and currently the chair of STC Learn, a nonprofit that ensures equitable academic opportunities for all District 303 students. And during COVID, that lovely pandemic, she led free parent workshops, produced online resources for families, and key, and served on key district committees. Now to brag on Doug a little bit. Doug is very community and civic-minded. He's on the Board of Directors of the St. Charles Business Alliance, actively helping guide the city's destination marketing organization in promoting local business and touring them. He serves on the Marketing Committee of, also of the St. Charles Business Alliance, leading insight and experience to campaigns that strengthen the city's brand and attract visitors. He's also a board member of the St. Charles Art Council, supporting local art initiatives and creative placement efforts, and also the excellent planer activities that just concluded last week. He's also a recognized supporter of the Art Council for contributions that he has made to advance the mission and its community programs. Got some remarks from Cassie Hill, who is the director of the St. Charles Art Council. "I can't think of a single instance that Doug hasn't helped, helped, offered help. He's hung banners throughout the Mount St. Mary's Park. He hung artwork hanging, art hanging systems in the new gallery. He did all the legwork for streamlining our phone and internet service, installed our door lock system, and helped put the display walls on for the planer activities." "All I could go on," she said, "but perhaps the most incredible part of all that Doug does is does it with grace and infectious smile on his face and kindness not often seen." So Cheryl and Doug, you exemplify what it means to give back to our community, and you deserve this recognition. It is also very fitting today, thank goodness that Doug and Cheryl are here, but it happens to be their 30th wedding anniversary today. So congratulations.
Again, thank you, uh, to our third ward, Alderman People, for doing such a wonderful job. And next month, Ward Four, you're up. All right? So, great stuff. All right, uh, next up, we're gonna now move on to the omnibus items. Alderman Sokitis, you have a motion.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the omnibus both items as second.
Okay, motion made by Sokitis, second by Werble. Are there any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Petrella?
Yes.
Werble?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Sokitis?
Yes.
Bulk?
Yes.
Longgard?
Yes.
Gemm?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, there is no old business, so I'm now gonna move on to new business. Uh, and the new business is, uh, presentation of a recommendation from myself to the city council to approve the appointment of Daniel J. Lichten as the Chief of Police of the City of St. Charles effective September 15th of 2025.
So moved. Second.
The motion by Petrella, second by Werble. I'm gonna step off the dais, I just want to say a few words.
So I have to step off just because I want to say a few words because of how excited I am about tonight, and because of how excited our, I think our entire council is tonight. Um, I want to start out by just outlining a little bit of how we got here. So, Chief Keegan, uh, who served adroitly for a number of, I think about 11 years, resigned back last March, and we were very blessed to have his leadership. Um, we then had to go out, and we had to look for a new chief. And we went through a national search. So when we talk about the importance of this position, uh, we didn't want to just restrict it to local or state. We said, we want to go out, we want to get the best candidate we can, and that's exactly what we did tonight. Uh, for everybody to understand what the process was, uh, we received, uh, about 50 applications from people all across the country who wanted to be the next police chief. And what we did, uh, through the help of Jen McMahon and our city administrator Heather McGuire and others, we put together the search firm, and we said, you know what, um, we want the best. And we went through that process, and, uh, I want to, I see a number of, of our members of our command staff, uh, not only do I want to thank the entire department, but I want to thank the command staff for what you did during the time period that it took us to find the very best. Um, it's not lost on the city council, it's not lost on myself, that the entire department, uh, had to do a lot to step up as we went through this search. And I never heard any complaints. What I heard is, you guys take the time that you need. The chief is important, and we'll do what we need to take care of the city, and you guys do what you need to do to make sure we get the best chief. And so I, I, I thank you, uh, not only the entire department and everybody that's here today, but especially the command staff for stepping up the way that you did. You made this happen. I think it's also important to, to just talk a little bit about what we wanted to do when we went through this search. Uh, what was important to, to the city staff and to myself and to the council is that we involved everybody in this search. And when I mean everybody, everybody. We wanted to find out how the police department felt about the different candidates. And so we had sworn and non-sworn personnel involved in the process. We had our directors, uh, engage in that interview process, and then we had the, the different candidates come in front of the entire city council. Um, when I think about what that must have been like as a candidate, to have to go through all that, we put you through a lot. Um, but we had one candidate that just rose to the top. And in fact, I think I've shared this, or I haven't shared it, but when I met you the first time, Dan, Heather and Jen had to close the door to prevent me from running after you that day and offering you the job. Um, I just felt during that first interview, uh, we knew what we had, um, but it was so, so exciting as the process went on to learn that everybody else agreed. So that everybody learns and understands a little bit about why we feel he's so good. Um, he brings 30 years of law enforcement experience, including 28 years with the Illinois State Police, where he served as a lieutenant colonel in the Division of Criminal Investigations. He has a strong background in patrol, violent crime, and criminal investigations. He holds an associate's degree in criminal justice, a bachelor's degree in management, and a graduate of Northwestern School of Police Staff and Command, where he earned the Franklin, Franklin Kremel Leadership Award and served as a class vice president. Now you might say, well, what is the Kremel Leadership Award? What that means is, there's very select few that are accepted to go to a Northwestern Police Staff and Command School. And then when they're there, they hope, and, and one, one person receives that award, and in that class, that was, that was our new chief. Um, so exceptional. Um, last couple comments, um, Dan, as, as we went through is, you know, everybody that's up here, we always talk about why we believe St. Charles is the best city in the state. And I'm sure that every city council and every mayor wants to say that about their city, but it's true in only one, and that's right here. Um, and when we went through this search, uh, as I had said, what we all wanted to do is to make sure that we found somebody that not only had the professional experience, but that we knew could relate to the citizens of St. Charles. And when I say that, that doesn't mean that it's gonna be easy, there's lots of tough decisions, but we wanted somebody that we knew that could work with the businesses, that could work with our residents, that could work with our staff, uh, and had that skill set and you do. So, um, on behalf of the city council and myself, uh, but I guess at this point, it's my recommendation until we go through this, but, uh, I just want to say to all of you and to you and your family, that we're very excited about welcoming you here to St. Charles. We look forward to a bright future. And after I get up there and ask for a vote, I'd love for you to come up and, and say a few remarks, okay? remarks, okay?
So is there a motion to approve, Dan Lycan is the next chief of police?
So moved. I think David made it, I second the motion.
A motion and second, that's correct. Are there any other comments?
I just want to say, welcome aboard, we're excited to have you. So it's been a long process, but we're finally here and we're glad you're a part of the community, so welcome aboard.
I mean, I appreciate your comments, Mayor, as well, so, long process, but yeah, welcome.
Welcome to St. Charles.
All right, well then, roll call?
Petrella?
Yes.
Werble?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Absolutely, yes.
Sokitis?
Yeah.
Foulks?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Gemm?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
Mayor, I won't make any shortcuts. First of all, I want to say thank you to a few people, my family, my wife, my son. We're gonna steal one of these chairs because I've never seen him sit still this long. I actually kind of feel like I was in Catholic school when I sat down, so Dylan, we're bringing a chair home. But thank you to my wife, the support at home, my mother, my sisters are here in the audience, my brother-in-law, my nephew, a good friend of mine for many, many years. The police department speaks volumes that you guys are here, and I really, really, truly appreciate it, all of you, and can't wait to get to know you guys better. Where'd Colonel Winters go? I still call him Colonel, he was in the back there. Jim Winters was one of my Colonels a long, long time ago, and I really appreciate being here, Jim. He became a chief later on over at Sycamore. And my state police replacement is also here, and that's Kevin Garcia, who will take an oath. Heather's in the back, I know she's far in the back, but thank you to all the city directors, too. It was a fun process, I'm not gonna lie. You guys did something very unique in the way that this occurred, and I thank everybody sitting up here at the front of the room, Mayor, and all the council. It was actually a very unique process, and I think speaks volumes that you involved your officers and your staff to bring some of those questions out. Because I've sat on a lot of panels throughout the years myself, and I've never seen anything like that. So it was fun, it was fun. And I've said it to a lot of people, I've had a great run, I turned in all my gear last week to the state police at headquarters after almost 29 years, but I can't wait to get to work. Still feel like I got a lot in the tank, and just can't wait to be part of the community. So again, thanks to my family for being here, for you guys all being here, and 15th is right around the corner, so I'm ready.
Welcome, chief.
Now, if you want to get out of here before the other business, you have permission. Take them to Kimmer's Ice Cream or someplace around Memorial, lots of good places to go before, so thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item up on the agenda is a public hearing to consider the approval of Amendment Number Three to the First Street Tiff District. I'd like a motion and a second to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Werble, second by Gemm. Roll call, please.
Petrella?
Yes.
Werble?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Sokitis?
Yes.
Foulks?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Gemm?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, the notice of this hearing was published in the Daily Herald on Wednesday, August 6th of 2025, and Tuesday, August 19th of 2025. That being said, I hereby convene the public hearing to consider the approval of Amendment Number Three to the First Street Tiff District. Tonight, we will begin by taking public comment from all interested individuals concerning this matter. Is there any public comment? Mr. Rasmussen?
Bob Rasmussen, Ten, Illinois. I'm just curious where we stand on the Tiff with the bonds. I got the letter because I live in the Tiff District, and I believe I'm the one that created the Tiff. And the bonds came out in 20, or 2004, I think they were, at 28 million, and the letter I received said they're at 29 million now. And I know we created a decent amount of, generated a decent amount of Tiff revenue, so I'm curious, do we know today on an annual basis what the Tiff generates in revenue?
So Mr. Rasmussen, for public comment, I can't answer that, but I will put you in touch with Mr. Conley right after, and he'll be able to...
Okay. And I am a proponent of it, so I'm excited to see it continue. I just hope that we can see the financials and understand that eventually we will get it paid down. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rasmussen. All right, have there been any written comments filed with the clerk's office or with the Economic Development Department? Heather indicating no. All right, would there, any aldermen like to make any comments for the record at this point in time? All right, the record should reflect that there have been no comments. At this time, I would ask if city staff has any additional comments that they would like to have or like to make at this time? I'm looking in the back row and seeing no additional comments. Okay, then I would like a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Werble, second by Petrella. All right, roll call, please.
Petrella?
Yes.
Werble?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Sokitis?
Yes.
Foulks?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Gemm?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, now moving to committee reports. Alderman Weber, anything from government operations?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Alderman Bongard, anything from Government Services Committee?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Alderman Werble, anything from planning and development?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Okay, that takes care of all the committees. Public comment, is there any additional public comment at this time?
Good evening, Steve Leffler. I have some comments regarding, that play into the whole Tiff thing, and I can talk about them now, or I can talk about them later, and there's some budgetary items also, and I've got a handout if you don't mind.
Give them all to the clerk. Go ahead and talk.
I mean, it's just one copy of...
They have to be put into the record.
Right, but it's one copy for each of you guys to see. Anyway, I'm here to talk today about the space, the piece of property that is between Sammy's and Halucene Grill. This would be south of Prairie and east of First Street. It's a parcel that I used to be in, my business used to be in Sammy's Building, my business also used to be in the Discount Tire Building, so I'm very familiar with it. That parcel is owned by the Park District, and for 40 years, they neglected it. It is part of the Tiff, Tiff Number Three. There are a little bit of funds left, still remaining in that Tiff, apparently, and I'd like to see those funds go towards helping the Park District develop that parcel properly so that we can have... Right now, we've got, as River 504 is coming in, I noticed when I leave my house and I head south on First Street, the sidewalk doesn't cross over Prairie, doesn't hit Prairie. There's a little stretch of grass. And I asked why, and they said, well, you're gonna have to walk down to the river from First and Prairie, go underneath the bridge and go around if you want to walk over to Sammy's. And that didn't make sense to me, and so I started looking into it some more. And I've talked, I had, kind of gave the same speech to the Park District last week, and I said, hey, it's time for you guys to develop this property, you know, you've had it for years and years and years, you've done nothing to it, the asphalt is falling apart, Sammy's, they've never pulled the railroad tracks out from in front of Sammy's, it's gravel lot, it's all dusty, and there's no safe way to cross Prairie, because there's a lot of people who would like to cross Prairie and walk over to the bike path that runs along Route 31. So without a crosswalk there, and we can use a crosswalk a little further east before we get to the bridge also, there's no sidewalk along Sammy's, along the north side of Sammy's, between Sammy's and Prairie. So David, you and I were talking about this last week, how there's just, it's a mess along there. So it'd be great if we could get something going with this, and, you know, get that area developed. As I said to the Park District, you know, it's time for you guys either to develop it so that we've got some additional parking and some safe streets and a sidewalk along there, or preferably a full bike path. Anyway, it's time for them to do that, to fix it up, or turn it over to the business owners in the area, you know, Discount Tire and Car Wash need lots of additional parking. There's cars everywhere because they don't have sufficient parking. Or they turn it over to the city, I'll deed it over to you guys so that you guys can fix it up. So that's my pitch tonight. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comments? All right, a couple different things. September 11th Remembrance Ceremony is 7:30 a.m. on September 11th. The chief and the fire department will lead the annual event outside the municipal building, and details are on the city website. Jazz Weekend is September 11th or September 14th. Make sure that we can get out and enjoy some cool jazz with live performances all around town. And lastly, our staff is working very, very hard on podcasts, so tune into the latest episode of the podcast to hear about Foxhaven Square, questions about the Charles Town Mall, and more. And so you can click on the website to listen. Heather, it says that there's no executive session?
After government operations.
After government operations, fantastic, all right. Any comments by council?
Question for staff, when will we see the ordinance to discuss and consider for e-bikes and mini-bikes?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's coming at the end of this month, the government operation.
End of this month, okay, perfect, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, all right, I'm looking for a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All right, motion by Werble, second by Spellman. Any questions, comments? Roll call?
Petrella?
Yes.
Werble?
Yes.
Bezner?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Sokitis?
Yes.
Foulks?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Gemm?
Yes.
Spellman?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Now we're gonna take a momentary recess to switch over to Weber and Government Operations Committee.